We welcome you all to the October 19th Troy City Council meeting. And we ask if you have a cellphone or electronic device on you that you turn it off completely. It bothers our sound system. That is helpful to us to have those all off, so thank you for that. This evening, we are pleased to have with us Pastor A.C. Phillips Phipps from Evanswood Church of God, who will provide us with our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Pastor?
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful fall day you've given to us. We ask today, tonight, that you would just guide and direct and give this council wisdom. We thank you for our great country that we live in, the freedom that we have. We pray these things in the name of our heavenly Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, it's nice to see you. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schelling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Here.
Broomfield?
Here.
Eisenbacher?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howarlag?
Kirwin?
Here. Coram President?
Mayor.
Councilman Eisenbacher?
I'd like to excuse Councilman Howarlag for being out of the county, or Mayor Portem Howarlag.
Yes, and we're, I'm going to remind all the council members, our sound system, there's a little problem. If you lean up toward the mic, because people in the audience have said sometimes they can't hear us, so, okay? Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by, moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we excuse Mayor Portem Howarlag for being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schelling?
Yes?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Broomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Coram, motion passes. This evening, we begin with two presentations, as is our custom, and so I'll be going down to the front to present those and call the folks up. Our first is celebrating 50 years of the Troy Chamber of Commerce. They celebrate 50 years this year, and I know we have folks here from the Chamber to receive this award. Michelle Hodges. Do you want to face the audience? Come on around here, here.
[laughing].
Can't believe it's been 50 years, but next year, we celebrate 70 years of the Troy Fire Department, so we're going to be having a big celebration then too for the fire department, our volunteer fire department. Whereas growing from five original members in 1959 to more than 700 in 2009, the Troy Chamber has worked diligently to strengthen the business community. The business market has shifted from one of agricultural to technology, trading cornfields for corporations. There were fewer than 100 Troy businesses when the Troy Chamber incorporated, and the residential population was about 13,000 in 1959. Michigan was selling land to real estate developers at the bargain rate of about a dollar a square foot. And whereas the Troy Chamber founder, Ed Russen, a wise man he was, opened Troy National Bank on the corner of Maple and Liburnoy in the early 1960s, housed in a former gas station. He was largely responsible for the tremendous expansion of Troy. When he first came to Troy in 1963, the city didn't have sewers, it didn't have a good tax base, and it had no way of determining what possible success was here. Ed realized that industry had to be the first bank customers since they were the ones with the large deposits. And whereas Ed Russen, Troy Chamber founder and president from 1964 to 1967, felt that the bank had to build its own customers as well as to help to build a tax base for the city. An Industrial and Commercial Development Committee of the City of Troy was created, acting as a liaison between the Planning Commission and the City Commission. And whereas the Troy Chamber membership doubled during 1965, seeing 100% increase in membership with an addition of 28 new businesses. Eileen Turner became the first executive director of the Troy Chamber in 1967 and served until 1986. During Eileen's service to the Troy Chamber, the first annual Troy Chamber of Commerce golf outing was held June 27, 1968, at the Sylvan Glen Golf Course, and Kmart moved its headquarters to Troy in 1972. And whereas Gaila Hauser was the first Troy Chamber President from 1987 to 2001, during her service, the Wall Street Journal featured Troy as the number three boomtown in the 1990s. Robert F. Kennedy Jr. came to speak about environmental responsibility at the Troy Youth Business Symposium. The Family Works of Troy, a child/elder care referral program was developed, and won the Innovator Award in 1991. Jerry Mathers, better known as the Beeve, came to Troy in 1995 to celebrate the completion of the widening of Big Beaver Road. And in 1996, the Somerset Collection created a 33-acre upscale shopping paradise with more than 200 stores. And whereas Michelle Hodges has been the Troy Chamber President since 2001, and during her tenure, the Chamber has partnered with the Lawrence Tech University in the Maple Road revitalization efforts, the Alontera House, supported with U M U L I Real Estate Forum, worked with key leaders from the cities of Troy and Birmingham to make the Transit Center a transportation hub for the region, sponsored the Helen E. Awards for Web Excellence for nine years, developed the Oaken County Wellness Coalition, developed the Nonprofit Network, developed key partnerships with Diversity Chambers in Oaken County, the Michigan Hispanic Chamber, the Caldean American Chamber, the Asian Pacific American Chamber, and created the Image and Arts Council of Troy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby congratulate the Troy Chamber of Commerce on its 50th anniversary and recognizes its impact upon not only its membership, but the entire community. And be it further resolved, the Troy City Council joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the Troy Chamber of Commerce 50th anniversary as they enter into our future with dedication to both the business community as well as to the Troy residents. Presented this 19th day of October 2009, signed by myself and all the council members. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor. I'm Dave Grenville, I'm the Chair of the Troy Chamber for 2009. Here with Michelle Hodges, our President, who was referred to earlier, Ann Comiskey is a fellow board member. It's a real pleasure for me to be here, especially representing the Troy Chamber. We really appreciate the relationship that we have with the city, the relationship we currently have, we've had in the past, and that we look forward to in the future. So, looking forward to another 50 years of a mutually beneficial relationship with the City of Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, our second award, don't let it scare you into thinking it's going to snow tomorrow, but we're always prepared and do the best job of snow plowing in any of the communities around. In fact, Oaken County hires our people to plow the county roads in the City of Troy, half of which the roads in Troy are county and half of which are city, because they do such a fantastic job and do it better, faster, and cheaper than they could. So, today we have the American Public Works Association Detroit Metro Snowplow Rodeo First Place Presentation, Doug Billings and Nick Herzek. And again, these awards really mean that they have achieved a level of excellence that is put to use for all the residents and businesses here in the Troy.
Hello, I'm Tim Richneck, I'm the Public Works Director here at the City of Troy. I'm going to introduce Henry Liebeck. He's been an APWA member for going on 50 years, and he's been an officer at the state and local level for a majority of those years, and Henry's going to give you a little history on the snowplow rodeo and what kind of activity it is. Henry?
Thanks, Tim. It's a great honor, on behalf of the Detroit Metro Branch of the American Public Works Association, to present this traveling trophy that sits over here to the City of Troy Department of Public Works for winning the 2009 Snowplow Rodeo. The Snowplow Rodeo is an annual event that takes place every year in the Detroit Metro area, and is designed to competitively train and test public works department teams and their skills for snow plowing and equipment operation. The city has destroyed, has, the City of Troy has demonstrated with public works equipment operators Nick Herzek and Doug Billings, their keen skills in operating snow removal equipment on the city streets of Troy. Their competition this year included 27 teams from Lansing to Brownstown Township. We in Public Works are sincerely proud of them, as should be the citizens of Troy. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words, or?
Sure. I don't really want to, but I feel I owe that to my coworkers, because this award represents not just the work that Nick and I have done, but the whole department of the DPW. Thank you very much. For example, Nick has been at the city for 11 years, he's a volunteer fireman at Station 3. Not only that, but his father is a retired police officer, spent 25 years here at the city. Thirty years. In my case, I was born and raised here in Troy. I have six siblings, we all grew up here, went to Troy schools, graduated from the old Troy High School. My third grade elementary building is a part of the Troy Historic Museum, that tells you how old and far back I go. But along with the two of us here tonight, there are some 80 other members of the DPW, men and women, who carry that lineage and desire for the city to do our job the best we can. And we just hope that in the near future, we understand that the City Council has some major decisions to make, but that you'll keep in mind that the men and women of the DPW have a lot more at stake than just our jobs. The City of Troy is part of our lives, and we hope it continues that way. Thank you.
Now, there are no carryover items tonight, but we're going to begin with our public hearings as we must by law. And our first item is the establishment of an IDB, an Industrial Development District, at 1400 Rochester Road, and Nina Lacari will present for staff.
Good evening Mayor, members of council. As you mentioned, this is the first of three public hearings, they're all interrelated. Tonight, we actually have our very first plant rehabilitation request, which is pretty good for the City of Troy. As you may recall, when you passed the resolution, the policy resolution, we had very few buildings in the city that actually qualified, because our industrial stock was too new to meet the requirements of the state law and the local policy. And now we do have a building that meets those requirements and is in pretty dire need of some renovation. And tonight will be slightly different than the tax abatements we've done in the past, because I've always told you that you have to pass the district or you can't have either of the two exemptions, and while that portion is true, there are two exemptions tied to this district being established. And either one of them could pass, or neither one of them could pass, hopefully both of them will pass. So, tonight, I won't be giving you the bulk of the information on the district portion of it. The district must be established for any type of abatement to be allowed on the subject site. This is the old Wagner Building on 1400 Rochester Road. It's been remodeled several different times. If you look at the sketch of the building in your packet, you'll note that the center portion of it has about 11 different additions that it's had over the years. There are two very large warehouse additions on either end of it, the north and south end of it, but the center portion of the building is very cut up, multiple ceiling heights. There are portions of the building where if you wish to go from the first floor to the second floor, you have to take an outside stairwell, you can't do it from inside the building. So, the center portion of the building is quite a mess, I mean, to be frank with you. So, that being said, the abatement that's being proposed for the plant rehabilitation obviously has to do with renovating the building. It's a better than $3 million investment that Mr. Bostic is willing to make. This is tied into Axaltech moving into the property. Axaltech moving into the property is tied into the abatement. Axaltech is requesting a small abatement on personal property. Under our current policy, that only would last for six years because of the volume, the dollar volume of the abatement and the number of jobs being created, and the fact that they're leasing the building and don't own the building. I'll get into more of that as we move on, should we move forward. But at this point in time, I would just suggest that council consider the fact that an abatement district is being requested for this site. You can leave that district in site without any abatement. Many communities have their entire manufacturing class, their industrial class, established as a district. Troy does not do that, we do it on a parcel-by-parcel basis. That was a lot more information than I intended to give you, I'm sorry. If you have any questions for the district portion of it, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions from council before we open the public hearing? Now, we have the data in our agenda, thank you. Open the public hearing, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on item C1, the establishment of the IDB District at 1400 Rochester Road? Mr. Reinhard?
What I can't understand is all these businesses are supposed to be helping out the city, and just one proposal alone, CO2, you understand, is a minus $1 million worth of tax revenue, $220,000, $202,000 for this city, and in a few months, you're going to ask the people for more money. So how do you justify, given these super rich people, the guy who says he can move his house three or four times in the City of Troy tax abatement, when you want the guy that lives in a two-story house to make up for the fact that he wants to make another million dollars? I think this time, the city should recognize that the businesses in this city are just stealing from the people, and you want us to increase our taxes? I'll be up here every two weeks telling you, you're a fool if you want to increase taxes in this city. The city loses money on a continual basis, they have no idea where it is. Just think about it. You want to raise our taxes and give that guy $200, a million dollars' worth of tax breaks? Think about it.
Is there anyone else that is here on this item, establishing the IDB District at 1400 Rochester Road? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return the item to the table. Council? Councilman Fleming?
Madam Mayor, I will move the resolution to establish the Industrial Development District at 1400 Rochester Road, as granted.
Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we establish the IDB District at the property at 1400 Rochester Road. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Broomfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes. Motion passes. C2, Mr. Lacari, is the granting of the plant rehabilitation exemption certificate?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if I would, a little, a little history on the way this portion of the law works. This is all tied into Public Act 198 of 1976. This is the, actually the front end of the title, it's called the Plant Rehabilitation and Industrial Development District Legislation. What this does is it would freeze the existing taxable value of the property at 1400 Rochester Road for a period of up to 12 years, which is recommended by staff. What that amounts to is it's going to be about $252,000 that the city will be guaranteed for those 12 years, and in this, these economic times, that's quite a feat. As you're well aware, industrial property and office property are losing value. For the opportunity to get an abatement or an exemption for the amount of the redevelopment of this property, Mr. Bostic is willing to freeze his existing tax base and guarantee that sum of money to the city. That's what makes that portion of this portion of the law such a good deal for the local community. Yes, there is the opportunity for him to escape from about a million dollars in taxes over the 12-year period, let's be clear on that, that's over a 12-year period. And of that portion of that, the city's share would be about $205,000 over 12 years. In the meantime, you will be guaranteed $252,000. The, the amount of the renovation is about $3.7 million. As has been pointed out, there are a couple items on Mr. Bostic's listing that don't actually qualify as portions of the renovation costs. I note, and Councilwoman Beltrameen brought to my attention that in that listing, there is also his December tax bill, obviously taxes are not part of the renovation. But the part that's important is that it has to be 50% of the existing value of the structure, it's far more than that, and it does exceed that amount. And they will have two years to prove to the Assessing Department and the City of Troy Council that he has reached his goal, and that goal only has to be 50% of the depreciated amount of the building, it doesn't have to approach the $3.7 million. In actuality, I think he only has to come up with about $2.4 million. So as you can see, he's far exceeding that amount of money. And once again, we are guaranteed the sum of money from the frozen taxable value, and that's this year's taxable value, not next year's reduced value, and that sum would be guaranteed for the full 12 years. And there is one other error on the sheet that was brought to my attention again by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Beltrameen and a colleague of mine whom I no longer speak with. On the financial statement there, I unfortunately checked that this was not a renovation. Well, obviously, it's a renovation and the State Tax Commission wouldn't allow it to go through if it wasn't a renovation, so should this measure pass, and before we sign and send all the papers to the State Tax Commission, I will correct that little check mark on there. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Lacari from council at this point?
Thank you.
Seeing none, out.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Bostic is here with a small posse, so if there were any questions for him, he'd be able to answer them.
I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Bostic, would you like to come forward? And you have some other folks that you'd like to introduce, maybe?
I'm Dennis Bostic with Bostic Rochester Road Development, the owners of that property. And we appreciate your time tonight to review the proposal that Mr. Lacari has presented here. We have with us tonight folks from Axaltech, the tenant for the building, and also the real estate. Fellas are here, John Boyd and Gary Globitzer, that represented the tenant and myself at the, for the transaction. As Mr. Lacari said, we are going to invest a tremendous amount of money in that property. It's in desperate need, as is that entire area. We hope once we make that investment there, it will be a catalyst for some of the other buildings in the area. As we all know, it's probably the oldest industrial area of our city, and then it does need updating, so we have that opportunity now with this tenant that we've signed. A great tenant, they're wholly owned by General Dynamics, they're not automotive, which is kind of a good thing anymore in our area here, so they're really dependent more on the federal government as a customer and other governments around the, around the world, actually. Mr. Miller is here from Axaltech, if you have any questions for him, and I'm open to any questions that he might have for me.
Council, are there questions for Mr. Bostic on this item? Councilwoman Karin?
It's good to see a reinvestment and rehabilitation going on in this property. How many jobs are you anticipating that will happen during that period and then in the future?
During the construction period, or during the occupation?
Both, during the rehabilitation of the property and then in the future.
During the construction period, I would estimate there will be about 40 jobs in total over the period, and then Mr. Miller can speak more to the jobs that Axaltech will keep in the city and also create.
Thank you, Mr. Bostic.
Good evening.
Good evening. As far as the jobs that we're going to create, we're moving operations in from an Illinois, a contractor that we have in Illinois, so we are going to maintain about 70 or so jobs that are in Troy currently, and when, when our operation is fully up and running, we'll have about 150 jobs at that site. So we're going to generate in the next three to five years at least 50 jobs, and we hope to generate more than that with our, our growing business.
Thank you. It's good to hear.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that's here to speak on this item? Yes, sir, Mr. Peters? Would you come forward to the microphone? Yes, Mr. Peters?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask, is there any environmental considerations, like what?
Sir, you have to?
Oh, I'd just like to know if there's any environmental, like cactiles or things of that nature, reeds, wild reeds, or anything like that, if there is anything in that nature or in the planning itself to be considered in there, so just basically going to be a or in the planning itself to be considered in there, so just basically going to be a traditional business that's got lawns and cement and whatnot? I just want to know, anything like that?
Thank you.
Like ducks, you know?
Thank you. We did have the complete report about the renovations and the things that are going to occur in the building, and... Mr. Lakari?
Madam Mayor, members of council, that information will come about during the site plan review and the approval process for all of the permits, and at this point in time, it's far too early to speculate as to what the site will look like when it's finished.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public hearing, and the resolution is before council, this is the granting of the plant rehabilitation exemption certificate.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
In view of the fact that we all can use new jobs in the city of Troy, and it's nice to have a non-automotive-dependent company wanting to invest, I would move that we grant the plant rehabilitation exemption certificate to Bostic Rochester Road Development LLC at 1400 Rochester Road through the resolution as printed. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next public hearing is the granting of the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate for Axal Tech International LLC at 1400 Rochester Road. Mr. Lakari?
One last time, and then you'll be done with me, hopefully. They did cover a bit of this already, Mr. Miller had pointed out that they do intend to add about 50 jobs here. The amount of their investment is $1.6 million roughly, creating 50 jobs. They currently have 118 jobs in Troy, some of those jobs will be shifted, some of those will not. They are looking at 50 brand-new jobs to the city of Troy. They qualify under the current council policy for a six-year tax abatement. That's a total taxing levy of $70,809, of which portion the city would be $23,132. On the Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificate, it's a 50% exemption. So they would be saving about $35,400 in total taxes, and the cost to the city would be about $11,700, considering everything else that you've already heard. Staff does recommend passing the resolution for the six years that they qualify for under the current council policy. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Lakari from council?
Just a comment.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
I did appreciate the background information, particularly on the policy, the policy that preceded me here on plant rehabilitation and how that had been amended, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all the background information.
Thank you. I should point out, there is also one small error on this one, it's not a good night for me here evidently. If you'll notice in the subject line, I know public hearings can't be grading, but this is supposed to say granting, so there was no grading involved here, I'm very sorry for that.
Thank you, Mr. Lakari. Is there anyone, I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone that is here on this item that wishes to speak? Mr. Reinhardt?
I think before you just grant these people tax abatements and all that, why don't you tell them, put it in the lockbox. Once you do what you say you're going to do, because I don't live on could, I don't live on wishes, I don't wish I could've, I... facts. In fact, my dad used to run Ragged Corporation, I've been in that building 100 times, I know what it looks like. You guys are the one that gave all the variance for all that junk inside the building, because you guys give variances to anybody, and then the next guy's got to come along, spend $3 million fixing it. So you're just costing people money in this city continually. Now I'm getting tired of it, and I'm being forced to run for mayor, I don't want to. So just remember that, you're forcing me to do something I don't want to do. Now you can see my ads in the paper already, I'm going to find out who's the crooks in this city. Put it in the paper.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Therefore, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council table for a resolution. Someone have a resolution that they wish to move forward? Councilman Fleming?
I will move the resolution granting of Industrial Facility Certificate for Axal Tech International LLC, 1400 Rochester Road as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? Oh, Councilman Eisenbacher?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to very, very briefly explain my vote. On these three items, I'm not voting against the project or the jobs, I just believe philosophically that we should have an even tax rate and not be picking and choosing different companies or entities to receive a different tax rate.
Folks, we, I encourage all council members to get as close to their mic when they're speaking. I know, I'm sorry about the sound system, folks, and we'll do the best that we can with it. Mine seems to be working, the one that's here is working, it seems to be on the peripheral. Let me explain about my comment on this item and the other two before. When the state passed Public Act 196, and when they allowed for Industrial Facilities Exemption Certificates for businesses to come in and rehabilitate areas, many communities are doing just that so that buildings that have been in disrepair or need to be reused can do that. We look very carefully at all the numbers that are involved with granting the exemptions before allowing it. And this is a good use for this building, it is bringing jobs into the community, and as was explained previously, sometimes when that happens in a certain area, then others decide in the surrounding property that they wish to do the same thing. And we need to encourage people to be using facilities within Troy in several areas in the community. So those are my comments. Further comments from the council? Mrs. Bartholomew, can we have the vote, please?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
By law, we are required to have our doors open during a meeting and not have them closed, but hopefully we will not be having the noise. We'll continue on, and our regular business items...
Let's take them in order.
Pardon?
Let's take them in order.
Are before us here. Our first is appointments to boards and committees, and we have city council appointments, which were forwarded, names were forwarded at our last meeting. We have a resolution on this. I understand, thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
At our last meeting, names were brought forward for Advisory Committee for Senior Citizens, Ethic Issues Advisory Board, and Personnel Board. At that time, there was a name brought forward for Personnel Board, I indicated that I had a name of an individual to bring forward too, and was going to ask for suspending the rules to insert that name in this resolution.
I'll support the suspension of rules.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we suspend the rules in order to insert an additional name into the Personnel Board nominations. Discussion of suspending the rules? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
No.
Motion passes. There, Mrs. Bartholomew, is this the correct time to insert the name? Therefore, I would like to bring forward the name of Ann Kaminsky for the unexpired term, which expires April 30th of 2011.
Which board?
For Personnel Board.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that Ann Kaminsky's name is brought forward for appointment to that board.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Eisenbacher?
I have a concern about conflict of interest because...
They can't hear you at the back there, I'm sorry.
I'm right.
I know.
I have a concern about a conflict of interest with this nomination. I think she's very well qualified, but the Personnel Board makes recommendations for the salary of our city employees, and our city employees make the budget for the city of Troy, and her current employer receives a portion of the city's budget. Could I please get a clarification if there is a conflict therein, or, and if it's appropriate with that conflict?
Mr. Forsythe?
Good evening, Council Mayor. To answer the question, under our city charter, our city charter prohibits conflict of interest, which is defined by anybody that would have a pecuniary interest with the city. Given the concern that was raised, perhaps there is a legitimate concern there that Ms. Kaminsky, because she would set the budget, as Councilman Eisenbacher explained, that there could be a pecuniary interest involved here.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this item?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I've been away for three years, and I need a clarification myself, if I may, on the function of the Personnel Board.